A meeting for December 16th will come to order, please. City Clerk, roll call.
Commissioner Abraham, Commissioner Gault.
Present.
Mr. Rhodes.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Present.
Mayor Kahler.
Present. Tonight, we have Meg Hancock here to do the Pledge of Allegiance. Meg, if you'll come forward, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Meg, if you'll just stay there for us, please. You know, I think one of the most important things you get to do as mayor is to recognize smart young citizens of Paducah. And Meg Hancock is an exemplary citizen. She joins in to help in any way that she can for the betterment of Paducah. She's smart, poised, talented. She's the perfect candidate for a Duchess of Paducah. So, it's my pleasure tonight, but I wanted to say a little bit more about Meg. She's a junior at Paducah Tillman High School, and she's the captain of the Speech and Debate Team. She's earned a degree of Superior Distinction from the National Speech and Debate Association, NFL Honor Society, and has been named a National Speech and Debate League Academic All-American. To earn this degree of Superior Distinction, the student must surpass 750 Competitive and Public Service Points. The NSDA Academic All-American Award is limited to students who have earned a degree of Superior Distinction, have made above a 27 on the ACT, and have at least a 3.7 grade point average. So, you know, she's one of a million, and she's right here in Paducah. And she's always stepping up when we need someone to fill in here, and we appreciate you coming tonight. But it was a ruse, you know. I just used that to get you here. So, tonight, to all to whom these presents come, greetings know you that Meg Hancock is named a Duchess of Paducah. I hereby confer this honor with all the rights, privileges, and responsibilities thereto appertaining, and testimony whereof I have caused these letters to be made patent and the seal of the city to be herein to fix in Paducah the 16th day of December in the year of our Lord, 2014. So, we expect lots of great things from you, Meg, in the future, and hope that you will come back to Paducah and be a wonderful citizen for us here in the future.
Thank you.
City Manager, are there any additions or deletions?
We do have one addition under Item 4, Ordinance Introduction. It's before B, amend alcoholic beverage ordinance to include extended hour supplemental license.
Okay. Thank you. We have swearing-in ceremony tonight for the newly-elected Commissioners, and we have Judge Hallowell here tonight to perform that swearing-in. So, congratulations again to each of you. And so, if you'd like to step forward, is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
(inaudible)
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And be faithful and true.
And be faithful and true.
To the Commonwealth of Kentucky.
The Commonwealth of Kentucky.
So long as I continue.
So long as I continue.
A citizen thereof.
A citizen thereof.
And that I will faithfully execute.
And that I will faithfully execute.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
The office of Commissioner.
The office of Commissioner.
According to the law.
According to the law.
And I do further solemnly swear.
And I do further solemnly swear.
That since the adoption of the present Constitution.
That since the adoption of the present Constitution.
I, being a citizen of this state.
I, being a citizen of this state.
Have not fought a duel.
Have not fought a duel.
With deadly weapons.
With deadly weapons.
Within this state.
Within this state.
Nor out of it.
Nor out of it.
Nor have I sinned.
Nor have I sinned.
Or accepted a challenge.
Or accepted a challenge.
To fight a duel.
To fight a duel.
With deadly weapons.
With deadly weapons.
Nor have I acted.
Nor have I acted.
As a second.
As a second.
In carrying a challenge.
In carrying a challenge.
Nor aided or assisted.
Nor aided or assisted.
Any person thus offending.
Any person thus offending.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Congratulations.[342.22][342.22](applause).
You're welcome.
No problem.
duly sworn in before the 1st of January. Tonight, we have a presentation, Paducah Power, by the interim General Manager, Mark Christen. Mark, welcome. And at last week's Commission meeting, the Commissioners made a request to have you come and give us an update, and I think you all have recently made a trip to New York to give us some details on that, so thank you.
Sure, it'd be my pleasure. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Commission. It's nice to join you this evening. I'm joined this evening by my Chair, Hardy Roberts, as well, and Andrea Underwood of our staff. As you may know, I was privileged to join the staff here October 15th as interim General Manager, and we've been pretty busy down at Paducah Power with a number of activities the last few weeks. It's my understanding that Jeff has shared the outlines of our recovery plan with you, but it might be good just to review those briefly, because that's sort of the focal point of all our activities this last couple of months. When I joined the organization in October, the Board made it very clear that there are a couple of priorities we needed to focus on. One was stabilizing and strengthening our finances, and the other one was offering a measure of rate relief to our customers. As you know, our rates have gone up pretty dramatically the last year, and creating a lot of hardship for both businesses and residents here in Paducah. So, we took a look at our situation and came up with a plan that was approved by the Board in November that does a couple of things. One, it strengthens our finances so that our cash reserves, which are very low right now, would be increased significantly by July of next year. The other thing it allows us to do is also reduce our rates by approximately 10% to 11% by July of next year. And the way we do that is by focusing on two major areas of cost. One of our principal areas of cost is a large amount of debt service that we have to pay every year. And one of the ways we can reduce that, at least temporarily, is by accessing our debt service reserves, which are required to be held as additional security for our bondholders for the debt that's held by both KMPA, which owns our share of Prairie State that we pay for, and our peaking plant. This debt service reserve can be replaced by something called a surety bond. It's basically an insurance policy. You pay a one-time premium for that. It allows you to free up a portion of this debt service reserve, which in our case is several million dollars. And we can apply that debt service reserve over the next three and a half years to pay our principal payments that would otherwise have to come from our rate revenues. So, that's a big help. The other thing we're looking at doing is more effectively managing our power portfolio of resources to reduce our net purchase power costs. And we're doing that by bringing in a new resource portfolio manager, American Municipal Power out of Columbus, Ohio. They're a very skilled and experienced company in this area, and we expect to be able to save approximately $4 million a year, based on our analysis, by bringing them on in January. That will allow us to not only strengthen our cash reserves, but reduce the rates, as I described. One of the keys to this is getting the surety bond. And in order to do this, you get this from a bond insurance company. You have to have strong credit. You have to make a good case that you've got a plan that's credible. And so, that was one of the principal purposes of our trip back to New York last week, is we met with three bond insurance companies to talk about potentially getting the surety bond as early as next month, so we can move forward with our financial plan. One of the other groups we met with were the three principal credit rating agencies. You may have heard of these folks, Fitch, Moody's, and Standard &amp; Poor's. They rate not only municipal credits, like the city and Paducah Power, but international and global credits as well. And we met with them and explained the plan that I just outlined to you. I would say we received well by the insurance companies. The credit rating agencies asked a few more pointed questions. They were concerned that, at a time when our rate tariffs that describe this power cost adjustment required us to raise rates, that we didn't. You may recall, in September, the staff came to the Commission, or, excuse me, to the Board, and requested an increase in the power cost adjustment. And the Board said, "Whoa, wait a minute. We need to take a look at this. Let's see if we can come up with a better plan," which is what we just described to you. But because our existing tariffs required an increase, and it wasn't, in fact, increased, it was frozen, basically, that was received, I would say negatively, by the credit rating agencies. We got a little warmer reception from Moody's and Standard &amp; Poor's, who I think want to wait a while before they decide whether to change our bond rating or not. But I just learned before I came down here this evening that Fitch is, will be announcing tomorrow that it's downgrading us from A- to Triple B. Now, that's still investment grade, but it's not good news. We obviously want to maintain a stronger rating if possible, but I think the Board and Staff recognized this as a risk we were going to run if, under the circumstances we're currently facing, we were going to try to not only keep rates where they are for the next six months, but actually reduce them in July. And I think that was the reason that we're looking at the downgrade. So, not the end of the world. It's not a good development, but it probably will impact the premium we have to pay for any surety bond. So, we want to continue to try to keep an eye on our credit rating and maintain that as strong as possible under the circumstances. Now, the plan I just outlined to you, if we're successful in implementing it over the next few months, we'll afford a measure of rate relief, but it basically just buys us time. It's not a permanent solution in the sense that it doesn't create a sustainable and competitive rate level. We need to do some other things to achieve that. And so, part of our plan that'll be ongoing, that may take a little more time, is looking at a long-term disposition, sale, or transfer of some of our assets, potentially part of Prairie State, all are part of our peaking plant, all are part of our hydro projects that'll be coming online late next year. And so, this is another service that AMP, A.M.P., American Municipal Power, can provide. They have 140 members in seven states. A number of these members are short of resources and are looking to actually buy into plants, potentially. And so, we'll be working actively with them to identify options or opportunities to do so over the next few months. With that, I'd be glad to respond to any questions that you might have. And of course, as you know, City Manager here, Mr. Peterson, is on our Board as well, and pretty well versed in these subjects.
I guess, so between now and July, you don't expect the rates to go up, but you don't expect any relief?
That's correct. Because we froze the rates where they were, at a time when we're under recovering our purchase power costs, we need to use the savings that identified to offset that deficit that's accumulating between now and the end of June. It's eating into our cash reserves, and we need to try to replace those. Typically, an A-rated debt, A-rated or higher, for a municipal utility that has 90 to 120 days of cash, we're well under 30 days. And so, we need to strengthen that as soon as possible, and also replace this purchase power deficit that I referred to earlier. But that will allow us to keep the rate at least where it is. If we're successful in implementing the plan, we can actually reduce the rates 10% effective July 1.
I know you saw this guest editorial in yesterday's paper by the Institute for Energy, Economics, and Financial Analysts.
Yes, I did.
Are you familiar with that organization closely?
Yes.
Do you have any response to some of the points that they brought out in here that you might want to take this opportunity to clarify on your behalf?
Well, the op-ed was written by the group you referred to. If you look into the group, you'll see that they have a, I call them an environmental group, I guess, but they're very anti-coal. That's clearly their priority. They've targeted Prairie State as an object of concern. The editorial talks about getting the stakeholders in the process around the table to share in the pain, so to speak, I guess. My reaction to the editorial, and what I told the paper when they contacted me, was the terms they use are euphemism for bankruptcy. I mean, they actually refer to the city of Vallejo and Stockton, as I recall, which underwent Chapter 9 bankruptcy, municipal bankruptcy. We've examined that issue, talked about it thoroughly with the Board, and made our position very clear on that in a resolution passed by the Board last week, that we're clearly not a candidate for bankruptcy, and we have no intention, now or in the foreseeable future, filing for bankruptcy. So, I don't think that's a feasible option for Paducah Power. The bankruptcy issue's a little confusing, I think, for folks, because as a municipal corporation, Chapter 9 of the bankruptcy code would apply in our case. And Chapter 9 has some threshold requirements that Chapter 11 for private corporations or provisions for individuals don't require, which is one of insolvency. You're not able to pay your debts. Your liabilities exceed your assets. And you not only have to be insolvent in the future, you have to be insolvent at the time of filing. And we're not. I mean, our finances aren't strong, as I just explained, but we're able to pay our debts. We have a plan to strengthen our finances. And key metrics that they would look at in a situation like that, such as bad debt and uncollectibles, in other words, inability to collect the revenues you need, our uncollectibles are at or below the industry average, which is a sign of good financial health. And so, in consulting with experts on this matter, it's very clear to us that we're not a candidate. And the reason we felt compelled to say something publicly about it is it was a potential obstacle to implementing the plan I just outlined. You can't very well go back to the credit markets and expect them to issue a surety bond to insure your bonds if they think you're going to be filing for bankruptcy.
Uh-huh.
Now, I have to say, when we met with the credit rating agencies, they're fairly sophisticated in financial matters, and they understood we weren't a candidate for bankruptcy, but they were very concerned about how we viewed it back here. So, we felt that we needed to clarify our position on that. And it was well received. I'm glad we did it. It served us well in our meetings last week.
So, is the only way to get those other bondholders to share in the problem, as they've talked about here, is for you to go bankrupt? Is that the only way to force them to help?
Well, I'll say, in my experience, which is limited in this area, but I mean, the research I've done, the people I've talked to that are experts in this area, most people are unwilling to forego interest payments that are due them under an agreement unless a judge orders them. So, I'm not looking for, I don't expect to get a lot of volunteers.
Yeah. Just wanted to clarify that. So, what about the operation of Prairie State now? I know that it's had some improvement.
Yes, ma'am. I was able to attend the owners' meeting at Prairie State a couple of weeks ago. As you know, we've not been satisfied with the performance of the plant. It's been a disappointment, and so, we made some changes there in the management. We brought in a new chief operating officer, who I understand actually met with you folks in September, I believe, Randy Short. He came on board in April or May, and we just brought in a new CEO just two weeks ago, but very experienced and impressive gentleman, Don Gaston. And I spent some time speaking with him, and he offered to come meet with us again. I understand you had a presentation in September, but it might be good to get an update in January or February. There have been some significant improvements. I think it's too early to say that the plant's turned the corner, or, you know, it's going to be operating at the levels that we want it to. But November was a good month. It achieved a capacity factor of over 90%. And our target is 85. We had a, I think the month of September was 82%. They've taken a different approach to their operating philosophy that I think will serve us well. The first year or two, they tended to operate the units full out to try to maximize production, and they weren't very sensitive to some of the things the plant was telling them about the operation, that maybe you should back off here and not operate it quite so hard. But they were basically running the plant to failure until something forced them to shut down. When that happens, the repairs you have to make typically are pretty extensive. It's not a two- or three-day outage. It's a month-long outage or more. And when that happens, it really impacts the capacity factor and the output of the plant. Now, what they're doing is taking partial D-rates and maybe backing the plant off a little bit, and dealing with the issue, not taking the unit entirely offline. And they've been able to achieve higher capacity factors doing that the last few months. So, I'm encouraged by what I've seen. And what was interesting and very heartening in our meetings in New York is the credit rating agencies that we meet with follow this very carefully. They rate, as you know, billions of dollars of bonds out on Prairie State, okay? And we have our fair share of them. So, they follow Prairie State very carefully, because it potentially affects the credits of the owners. But they wanted to hear the latest, and we spent, in most cases, close to an hour talking about Prairie State with each of the three principal rating agencies. And they all offered the opinion that they felt Prairie State was a good plant and would be a valuable asset. They're taking the long run here. It's a 40-year plant. They view the first two years as unusually extended kind of shakedown period. They've seen signs of improvement. So, they seemed optimistic. They weren't nearly as concerned about Prairie State in our case as they were about our cash balances and our failure to raise the PCA when our tariff said we should. And while they acknowledged the merits of our plan, they had trouble getting past that, I think, is the way I would put it. You know, that's, one of the strengths of public power is that we're basically self-regulated by an autonomous Board, and when you need to raise rates, you raise them. That's why typically the sector has a very strong credit rating. And so, when you don't do that, it's a problem. But as I said, Triple B is still investment grade. It should allow us to move forward with our plan, albeit at maybe somewhat higher cost. And so, we'll be busy trying to get that implemented.
What, just, you know, for my information, what's the bond rating for Prairie State?
Well, Prairie State is, I guess, what I'd call, it's an operating company. The PSGC, Prairie State Generating Company, doesn't have any bonds outstanding. They're basically a report to the owners as the operator. The owners are the ones that hold the bonds. So, there are, I think, eight or 10 owners. I can't name all of them to you. American Municipal Power's the largest. They have about 23% or 4% of Prairie State, I believe. The Illinois Municipal Electric Agency has maybe 15%. Indiana Municipal Power Agency in Indiana has about 15. We're one of the smaller owners with, in Paducah Power's case, I think we have about 6% or so. And so, we're the ones that have the bonds. So, they follow all of those owners.
All of those.
Yeah, all of those owners, right. The other owners are a little better positioned in the sense that they don't have all their eggs in one basket. AMP, for example, has many projects. Prairie State's probably one of the biggest, but the costs there don't impact their overall portfolio the way it does ours, you know? So, we've had more of a negative impact.
Well, after the last meeting, when you all were here, it was before you came on board, we felt so strongly about how this needs to be addressed, because it's impacting our citizens, impacting our businesses and our community so much, that we passed that resolution that was shared with you all, just encouraging you, and I think we even used the word demanding and action, to do everything that you possibly can to address the issue. So, we have faith in you that you're doing that?
If you've got any suggestions, let us know, but we're doing all we can in this area.
And I would just like to commend you, Mark, and the Board for being willing to always meet with anyone that has any questions. And I know you've met with lots of different groups, individuals, groups of people, and you listen to those people, and you answer their questions. You all have been very forthcoming with any information that people have requested, and I know you've had a lot of open records requests, which I'm not sure the public understands that that costs money to provide those open records, and you all have been very forthcoming with that. And, you know, I think they're to be commended for doing everything that they can to help in this situation.
Well, thanks. We think it's important that we share as much information as we can with the public and try to be transparent. The issues are a little complex. It's kind of hard to understand why some of this stuff happens or why we're doing what we're doing. We'd be glad to meet with anybody that wants to talk about the situation.
Any other questions? Thank you so much.
Thanks for the opportunity to join us this evening. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Hardy and Andrea, for being here. Okay, we'll go on. Let's see, we have the audit of the Kemper CPA Group. Are you, John?
I'm good. I probably want to move this out of the way here. I'm going to mess somebody's presentation up. Tonight, we have with us David Hampton, CPA with the Kemper CPA Group, and they are our financial statement auditors. Kemper performed our most recent financial statement audit, which was the year ended June 30 of 2014. And David is here to answer audit-related questions that you may have.
John, down here. Get a little dry flow. As John says, my name's David Hampton. I'm a partner with Kemper CPA Group, and we are here to present your audit report on your June 30, 2014, Comprehensive Financial Audit Annual Financial Report. First off, before I begin, I would like to take this opportunity to thank you for the opportunity to serve your organization. Also, want to thank the entire staff of the city for their help and support and willingness to help us bring us together. It's a substantial report, and it requires a lot of effort on their part. A lot of inquiries are made, procedures that we have to perform during our audit, and they were most cooperating and provided all the assistance they could, and we really appreciate that. Also, want to thank the Finance Department, and John, and all of his staff. They take the bulk of our inquiries and testing, and so, they're, did an exceptional job of putting up with us, to say. And we really appreciate everything they do and their hard work, and it shows in your all's report. Now, I would like to go over your comprehensive annual report. Your report's made up of about four significant parts. You have an introductory section, a financial section, which includes our audit report, your management discussion and analysis, which is required supplemental information, your basic financial statements, as well as required notes and other supplemental schedules. You have a statistical section in there, as well as a single audit section, because you're subject to, because of federal grants. If you would, if you all happen to have your cappers with you, I can get you to turn to page, page 11, or I can just go over it. I can go ahead.
Go ahead. She's getting mine off my desk. Thank you.
All right. All right. Well, on page 11 is our independent auditor's report. In the second and third paragraphs, we discuss the responsibility of the city and our responsibility as your auditors. These financial statements presented are the responsibility of the city, and our responsibility is for expressing opinions on these statements. The sixth paragraph discloses our opinion, and as noted, we determine your statements are fairly presented in all material respect. This is known as a unmodified or a clean opinion. In addition, as noted on the seventh paragraph of the next page, your financial statements also include certain required supplemental information under governmental auditing standards. We have applied limited procedures on these with regard to your management discussion analysis, as well as pension supplementary information that's located on pages 13 through 28 and pages 86 through 89. Because this information was not audited, we are not expressing an opinion on this information. As noted in the ninth paragraph, we did apply audit procedures on the supplementary information included on pages 90 through 113, and the schedule of expenditures of federal awards on pages 134 and 135, and determined these statements and schedules are fairly presented in all material respect. In addition, in paragraph 10, we did not audit the introductory or statistical sections. Accordingly, we are not expressing an opinion on those due to limited procedures performed. The next significant report that I need for you to look at would be on page 136. This will be near the very end of your CAFR report, back in the single audit section. This report will disclose our findings, if any, with regard to the city's internal controls over financial reporting and compliance with certain laws, regulations, contracts, and grant agreements under government auditing standards. As noted in the second paragraph, our responsibility is to consider the city's internal controls over financial reporting for the purpose of planning and performing our audit, but not for expressing an opinion on the city's internal controls. Accordingly, for the purpose of this report, we are not expressing an opinion on the city's internal controls. With this in mind, as noted in paragraph four, we did not identify any deficiencies as material weaknesses which we are required to report under governmental auditing standards. In addition, as noted in the next paragraph, as part of our obtaining reasonable assurance whether the city's financial statements are free of material misstatements, we perform certain tests of compliance with certain laws, regulations, contracts, and grant agreements. As noted, we noted no instances of noncompliance or other matters that are required to be reported under government auditing standards. Our last report is on the next page, on page 138, as required by the U.S. Office of Management and Budget Circular A133 Compliance Supplement. This report will disclose any noncompliance, if any, regarding the city's compliance that could have a direct or material effect with the provisions of your major programs or grant agreements, basically your federal award grants. As noted in the second paragraph, compliance with these requirements is management's responsibility. In paragraph three, we note our responsibility is to consider your compliance for the purpose of planning our report to obtain a reasonable assurance the city complied with the type of compliances that could have a direct or material effect on your major federal programs. As noted in paragraph five, we've determined that the city has complied in all material respect with the type of compliances that could have a direct or material effect on each of its major federal programs. In addition, as noted in paragraph six, the city is responsible for the effective internal controls over compliance. As noted in the second paragraph on the next page, we noted no instances of noncompliance or other matters required to be reported under OMBA 133. And that pretty well concludes our presentation of your CAFR. Be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions?
Once again, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank you for being able to serve your organization, and feel free to contact myself, Sandy Gibbons, or Tara Blazini, if you should have any questions, and we'd be glad to answer any questions you may have in the future. We're free and available for you at any time.
Thank you.
Thank you again for the opportunity.
And this is all on our website, isn't it? Do we have the financial report? Do we put that on the website as well, John?
Yeah, Mayor, as I can mention also, not only to you all, but to people at home that are watching this, that if you want to, if you have a sleepless night, you can go to our website at www.paducaky.gov, and you can look at the current CAFR, all the way back to 2002. So there's a number, I guess that's 12 years, all the details out there. So if you want to do that, you can. And we put that on, I think, last week.
Okay.
So it's out there.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Good job. Okay, we'll have our municipal orders now. Commissioner Rhodes, please.
On the recommendation of the city manager, the Board of Commissioners of the City of Paducah, order the personal changes on the attached list to be approved.
I need a second.
Second.
Steve.
Good evening, Mayor. Commissioners of note, there's one police hire on there. There was another round of testing this past weekend that HR and the Police Department conducted, so there'll be still some future positions that will have to be filled.
Thank you. City Clerk.
Commissioner Gault.
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Kaler.
Aye. Commissioner Wilson, please.
I move that a municipal order authorizing and directing the Finance Director to transfer $15,000 from the Commission contingency account to the city's War Memorial account be adopted.
Second.
Hi, Mark.
Hi, Mayor. Commissioners. Last week, members of the American Legion Post 31 and other, representing other veteran service organizations, brought to me and had a letter that you all have in your packets requesting this funding and recognizing that they have to go through, jump through some hoops as far as developing a War Ontario memorial that they hope to have placed in Dolly McNutt, and also understanding that we haven't made a decision on the placement in City Hall at this point, and that that will be a consideration by the Monuments and Memorials Committee when we have that.
Any questions for Mark?
And what you also have in there is a first draft from Patrick Kerr, as far as the memorial is concerned.
And that is something that the Monument Committee looks at, materials.
Materials, maintenance, longevity, those types of things.
So when that committee meets, then Pat will probably...
Make some presentations to us.
All right.
I know that they said that they were going to do some study, because this was the first drawing. They've got to make sure that the monuments would be able to sustain that height, the heights necessary, and that sort of thing, from a safety standpoint.
Okay, thank you. City Clerk, please.
Commissioner Gault.
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Kaler.
Aye. Ordinance is adoption. Commissioner Gault, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Paducah, Kentucky Approving and Authorizing the Execution of an Interlocal Cooperative Agreement Among the City of Paducah, Kentucky and the Paducah-McCracken County Convention Investors Bureau for the Cooperative Financing of an Economic Development Project in the City of Paducah, Kentucky." This ordinance is summarized as follows. This ordinance authorizes the City of Paducah, Kentucky to approve and enter into an interlocal cooperative agreement between the City of Paducah, Kentucky and the Paducah-McCracken County Convention Investors Bureau, the Bureau pursuant to Section 65.210 to 65.300, inclusive of the Kentucky Revised Statutes as amended in Interlocal Act. The ordinance approves the form of the interlocal cooperative agreement presented to the Board of Commissioners of the city, with such changes therein as shall not be adverse to the city and may be approved by the mayor. The interlocal cooperative agreement sets forth the common plan among the city and the bureau for the purposes of financing a portion of the cost of the acquisition, construction, installation, and equipping of an upscale hotel on city-owned property adjacent to the publicly-owned convention center, generally known as the Julian Carolyn Paducah Expo Convention Center.
Second. City Clerk, please.
Commissioner Gault.
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Kaler.
Aye. Ordinance is introduction. Commissioner Rhodes, please.
All right. I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Paducah, Kentucky Authorizing the Mayor to Enter into a Promissory Note Modification Agreement Between the City of Paducah and Paxton Park Municipal Golf Course Board." The ordinance is summarized as follows. This ordinance authorizes the City of Paducah to approve a modification of certain promissory note dated February 7, 2014, made and delivered from the Paducah Golf Commission, DBA Paxton Park Municipal Golf Course Board, the commission, to the City of Paducah in the original amount of $225,000 and zero dollars, and authorizing the mayor of the city to execute the modification agreement and any and all other documentation necessary to effectuate the modification of the promissory note.
Second.
Hi, John. Simply put, the ordinance before you seeks to amend the promissory note that was executed a year ago. Basically, the Golf Commission has requested that principal payments be adjusted in calendar year 2015 only, and then spread over the remaining life of the note. Other than that, there are no other changes.
We don't vote on this tonight. Thank you, John. Commissioner Wilson, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Amending Section 6-40 License Types and Fees of Chapter 6, Alcoholic Beverages of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Paducah, Kentucky." This ordinance is summarized as follows. The city hereby amends Chapter 6, Alcoholic Beverages of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Paducah to include an extended hour supplemental license fee and the amount of $300 per annum.
Second.
City Clerk, do you want to speak on this?
Basically, I'm going to try to speak on this. Basically, this ordinance, what it does is it allows anyone who is a non-quota-one licensee, which would be someone who has a horse track, or a convention center, or an airport that we have here. Of course, our airport's not licensed here in the city. But if they have a license, they can apply for what's called the extended hour supplemental license. It allows them to be open for extended hours, which would be like on Sundays. So it'd be like the Luther Carson Center, or the racetrack that we have here. And this fee was in the ordinance before, but through our revisions in the past year, it had been omitted, and so we need to get that back in there.
So just cleaning it up?
Just cleaning it up. We've not raised the fee. The fee stays the same.
Okay.
We're now aligned with the state.
Yes.
Great.
Okay, our workshop tonight, Outline of Solid Waste Management Plan. And I'm sure that we'll have a lot to think about after this presentation.
I'm a bit under the weather, so I don't know how strong my voice will be. It's been some time ago that the city commission directed me and staff to prepare a plan or proposal for a program of curbside collection of recyclables. As everybody knows, the city operates a curbside garbage collection program that does not recognize any distinction in that waste stream. So we have put something together tonight for you to look at, by way of outline, that we call a Plan for Future Solid Waste Management for the City of Paducah. Little bit about that existing program. The city collects approximately 26,000 tons of solid waste each year from residential and commercial customers. Solid waste is taken to a transfer station that is owned by Republic Services that's located on Burnett Street. We have a contract with Republic, and we pay Republic in the form of a tipping fee per ton of solid waste that moves through that facility. Republic, by contract, is responsible for disposal of solid waste. A lot of people think of disposal as when it leaves their house or residence. That's actually kind of transportation. Disposal of solid waste on the back end is, in this case, entering a landfill. And under our current contract, Republic is responsible for procuring that landfill, as well as transporting waste to it. So the city is not in the landfill business, nor in the transportation business to the landfill. Relatedly, the city owns and operates a compost facility on North 8th Street, where we recycle yard and brush debris. Compost, as you know, is sold to the public for a small fee. It's one of the coolest things we have going, so to speak, but it's also part of our solid waste management system. The city also pays Greater Paducah Sustainability Project a monthly fee per ton for diversion of recyclables from the waste stream. As you all know, GPS has operated what I would call a drop point facility for a number of years, and they process and market recyclables from there. The plan that we're bringing forward tonight, and it's not complete, it is an outline. It is nonetheless somewhat detailed, but in other areas lacking in detail. But again, it's coming from a directive by the city commission to formulate a program for curbside collection of recyclables. And I think it's important to note that this is a city commission request. It's not being driven by necessarily any kind of mandate at either the state or federal level at present. This is combined with the present need to secure long-term arrangements for receiving, transporting, and disposition of solid waste and recyclables. And that is because the contract with Republic ends this spring, and that will make that 20 years with Republic and its predecessor. And under Kentucky law, we are required to competitively procure that again. If we didn't do that, it would become a franchise which we are not allowed to enter into. So we need to secure facilities for the future. And we're not going to speak to this tonight in any great detail, but we are at work preparing a request for proposals for those facilities, as well as the transportation and landfilling and recycling processing into the future as well, which is a pretty big effort in itself, I might add. The goal here, and I've had some discussion with the commission on this, is that we manage our solid waste through an integrated system that links all components so that we can, in fact, maximize efficiency, in part through leveraging of resources, and achieving a high degree of customer service through a public-private partnership. Now, that sounds like a lot of cliches, and admittedly, it probably is, but there is substance behind each one of those. And we hope to achieve a lot of things by integrating this thing, finding the opportunities for the coming together in these several areas, all the while maintaining a high degree of customer service. As you know, we found out in our community survey a couple of years ago, as I recall, and I know Rick will correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe our solid waste collection was the highest-rated service that the city offers by virtue of our residents coming in at something close to 90 percent good or excellent ratings. So we certainly, whatever we do here, we want to maintain that standard of customer The objectives of this plan would be to establish a curbside recycling program to our existing garbage collection customers, do so... our existing garbage collection customers, do so within the existing customer charge, if possible, and as of tonight, we don't know if that's possible. What I'll tell you is that we endeavored to achieve that end, albeit recognizing that there would be certain components necessary to be part of it to achieve that end or come as close as we could, and Chris Yarber will get into those a little later. Another objective of the plan is, as I mentioned, to secure long-term facilities for receiving and shipping of both garbage and recyclables. Part of the plan would be a transitional program ahead of the actual startup of curbside collection that would include an effective information and education for programs, and then looking down the road indefinitely, we believe that it's important to retain, if not expand, a program of advocacy in Paducah and the surrounding area for recycling that would include limited special events and programming to perhaps deal with some of the recyclable stream that would not be included in the curbside collection for manageability The current facilities contract, again, I mentioned, is with Republic Services. It expires June 30th, and again, under Kentucky law, we cannot automatically renew it. In fact, we have renewed it twice since its inception, and we are preparing a plan to seek out interest in that. That would include a single site, that would include separate facilities to receive and transport garbage and recyclables. So we are anticipating that facilities would be on a single site that would be there for bringing in garbage and recyclables, be it through a truck, be it city or commercial, or through private vehicles as well, which is accommodated now between the transfer station and the GPS facility. We would, of course, want to establish spatial standards for the facilities for accessing it that meet requirements for customer safety and convenience. The facility, both facilities now arguably have shortcomings in those regards, and if we are going to design facilities for the long term here, we think that it only makes sense that we take a look at these issues and design them into the facilities so that we achieve the standards that we think are necessary. The facilities for disposal of garbage, i.e. landfill, as well as for processing and marketing of recyclables under the current concept, would be identified and secured by those who would propose and respond to the RFPs. We know that there are private facilities out there, as well as some public, on both the landfilling and recyclable processing side. Again, in my view, in the long term, we have a commodity here, and we would be remiss if we didn't attempt to leverage private interest and private investment around that commodity. So that's what we're trying to do here, and we're hopeful that what we have to offer, if you will, will match up with what is being sought out in the private sector, and that perhaps existing facilities out there that are operating at a much higher capacity and with a much higher volume than those which operate locally or might otherwise operate locally could be brought into play so that we could achieve the greatest economy of scale while taking advantage of investment that's already in place in the private sector, perhaps negating the need for additional public investment in facilities, as in fact the city did 20 years ago when it went into the contract with CWI, and the city was able to forego, city and county perhaps, I'm not sure, just how the coming together was, but the public was able to forego an additional investment in a landfill space at that time, which retrospectively, I think from everybody's point of view, makes sense. Is that the end of my slides? Okay. I want to turn over to Chris Yarber to make the rest of the presentation. I also want to recognize both Chris, Chris's efforts in putting this together as well as Rick Murphy. There's been a lot of more time and thought put into this than what the length of the presentation might otherwise indicate, trying to come up with something that has harmony throughout and that, again, maximizes opportunities that we think are present to bring into play resources in a way that brings about ultimately the level of efficiency we're looking for as well as customer service and accommodating the public's needs in these areas. So without him, I'll turn it over to Chris.
Good evening. With that said, what I'd like to do is take you through the process of the frontline or the front end of a curbside recycling, what we feel like it would take to, for the city to accomplish this with the, with some changes to our operations. Current, the City of Paducah solid waste, current customer base services, as we all know the reason why we're here, residential recycling, we don't provide that service at the moment. Residential accounts, we have 9,562 with approximately 10,900 rollouts that we service today. The bulk and brush program, which includes yard waste, debris, large items such as chairs, couches, refrigerators, and things like that, that's random. The customer calls in and requests that service. Just an overview of the department, vision of solid waste. To the left there, you have the commercial, excuse me, the residential truck drivers, the laborers. You have our commercial setup, then you have our compost yard, and at the far right, you have our bulk brush, which is the ROWs. That's just to give you an idea of the way that the vision is set up for collection. Currently, the solid waste equipment for residential collection, we have rear pack, five rear packers total, one reserve, so we continuously have four out providing service. If one of those go down, we have one in reserve to take the place of that. This is an example of the rear packer, for those that may not be aware of the different types of trucks we have. We have our sidearm or sidearm loaders. I think Commissioner Gault had the opportunity to go out and watch one of those be operated. She may even operate it herself. We have two of those, and both of those are, when they're available, they're running every day. We have no reserves, so those stay on the road. And this is an example of the sidearm. In addition to that, we have what we call a mini packer. It's more like a rear packer, it's just a smaller truck. We use this to go through locations that the larger trucks can't get to, cul-de-sacs in certain areas, we'll use this type of solid waste truck in. And then we have our knuckle booms, and that's what we use for the bulk brush and the large furniture items and things of that nature. With that said, the way we're currently equipped, we have four rear packers, and we estimate they can pick up approximately 350 rollouts per day, four days a week, which is a total of 5,600. We'll go through that process for each type of truck, the two sidearms, 700 rollouts per day, four days, a total of 5,600. Keep in mind, the rear packer is a two-man operation. Sometimes, depending on the holiday scheduling, sometimes they're three-man operation. The sidearms are one-man operation, so for four rear packers, you have eight employees. For the two sidearms, you have two employees. The mini packer can pick up approximately 125 rollouts per day, which would be 500 per week, which gives us a total of 11,700. That's what we're equipped to do with the way the organization stands today, which brings the question, if we went to curbside recycling, what would it take? How many would we have to be able to pick up on a weekly basis to keep up with the demand if we went to curbside recycling? If you remember, I borrowed this slide from Pam Spencer from the citizen survey, and if you'll notice, this is asking about single-stream recycling. Forty-eight percent of the respondents said very interested. So what we try to do is take this information from the survey and come up with a figure to try to compute what we think we would have to serve if the city provided curbside recycling. So based on the number of customers we have, if we went with the 48 to 50% that responded that they would be very interested in curbside recycling, that would give us an additional 4,800 pickups per week. You take that and you add it to the residential trash that we currently collect, and that gives us a total of 14,362 residential pickups per week. And I'll take you back to what we're equipped to do, 11,700, and we're estimating that we're going to need to provide services for 14,362 pickups. So we're, as we stand today, we're going to come up short providing curbside recycling. Given the engineering and public works department's current solid waste customer base, organizational structure, routing, and equipment, in order to make residential curbside recycling a reality for our community, it will be necessary for customers and organizations to embrace and accept the necessary changes to make curbside recycling possible. So to accomplish curbside recycling and create an efficient program with the, within the current rate and fee structure, operational changes would be necessary. So if today we were charged and we said we're going to try and provide curbside recycling, here are some of the changes we would make or we would see. Weekly pickup day may change to create efficiencies by balancing routes and rollout counts. Just to give you an example, this is a map of the current zone by day. If you start to the far left, you see it says Tuesday, then the yellow part is Wednesday, Thursday, and so forth with Friday. You'll notice Monday is not on here. Monday is our current brush collection day, so it's not in part of the rollout zones. The point being, this map could completely change to balance the days and the rollout counts so we can be more efficient to provide curbside recycling. For example, the Tuesday area is bigger, but that doesn't necessarily mean there's more rollouts in that area, just depending on the density of the population and the households that we service. In addition to the zoning and the routes changing, possibly changing, rollout placement, we would recommend that rollout placement be moved from the alleys to curbside for efficiency, safety, cost savings, and the functionality of the equipment. And just to give you a few examples of that, this is the map that shows currently the alleys that we continue to service in the City of Paducah. I'm not sure if you remember, but a few years ago, we went through a process when we purchased the sidearm trucks that we have today of bringing some of the citizens out of the alley service and going curbside so that we could be more efficient and get more rollouts and get more done. But these are the alleys that we continue to service. As far as safety goes, this is an example of an alley we continue to service today. You can see the closeness. This is, all alleys aren't like this, but there are several. As far as cost savings, not only does the city have to repair this alley, we maintain and upkeep it, so that would be a cost savings in itself that's actually, when that refuse truck goes up and down that alley, is passed on to the street division to come back and make repairs of this alley. So, and if we did curbside recycling, not, that truck would go up and down that alley twice as much as it does now. So this is just an example of an alley that we would consider coming out of. It's called a T alley. Once you get the, driving the way that you see, once the refuse truck gets there, it has to make a left or right turn, and it's just, it's too much for those big trucks to do. Another example of an alley we would recommend coming out of, it's a dead-end alley. Currently, the refuse truck has to back down the alley and then pull out, and that's just something that we would consider doing away with. Also in these alleys, when these trucks are going up and down the alleys, you see, it causes damage and it could potentially cause drainage issues and things like that. So enough of the alleys. Changing items left outside of the rollouts would not be picked up. This is for efficiency, safety, and the limitation of the equipment being used. If we go to the sidearm trucks, something like this that we may currently pick up today, we would not be able to pick up. The resolution being that there would also be a recycle container there, so hopefully they would have less trash and/or the resident would have to have another rollout.
Chris, to be clear on that, we are, in fact, not picking that up in sections of town now where we're using the sidearm. Is that correct? So we've got somewhat of an equity there?
Just another example of something that would not be picked up. The city would still service this individual, they would get the rollouts, but would be up to the citizen to call in and request that the additional stuff be picked up, and we would have to go back for what we call a PayPal to go back and get the rest. Here's another example. Depending on what area of town you're in, if you're being serviced with a rear packer, this would be picked up. If you're in a sidearm, it would not be picked up because of the limitation of the equipment. Just to summarize some of the changes, the weekly pickup may change, rollout placement will be requested to be moved from alley to curbside, and items left outside of the rollouts would not be picked up. Organizational changes. All solid waste employees will be required to obtain their commercial driver's license. Currently, we have truck drivers, we have laborers. Of course, the laborers are not required to have a CDL. We would revise the job descriptions to properly align with responsibility. Currently, we have truck drivers, laborers, and right-of-way maintenance. The after picture, after the changes are initiated, you may see front loader truck driver, sidearm truck driver, and collector. We've talked about some of the services. As far as the hours, the zones, the scheduling may change. We've talked about the organizational structure, which would just be house cleaning so that we would be as efficient as possible with our employees. The last thing I'd like to speak about is the equipment purchases. As we stand with the number count that we're anticipating would participate in the curbside recycling, at this point, we'd recommend purchasing three sidearm refuse trucks. Currently, we have more rear packers than we have sidearms. We would like to invert that, just to allow us to be able to pick up more efficiently. And again, that would be, the upper left-hand corner, we would buy more of those and dispose of the, some of the rear packers that you see in the right bottom corner. After that is done, we purchase the equipment that we're looking to purchase. We would have four sidearms, and once you go through the math, the total that we would be equipped to pick up would be approximately 14,500 per week, and if you look at the bottom number, the 14,362, that's the number we anticipated would be the total with the curbside recycling, so we would be equipped to provide the service. In addition to the sidearm trucks, we would recommend purchasing, or we would have to purchase, approximately 9,000 refuse containers. Currently, on the left-hand side, for trash, we use the 96-gallon container. What we would recommend is using the 96-gallon container for recyclables and going to our 64-gallon container for trash. From what we've seen and what we've experienced, many of the households have more recyclable materials than they do what would need to go to the landfill, so. materials than they do what would need to go to the landfill, so, and they're bulkier than, the recycle items are bulkier usually. This would also encourage recycling. Implementation, we would have to do this in stages. The first step would be bring all services to curbside. We would adjust the routes for efficiency, procure the, the equipment and get it ready for service, and then educate citizens on all services. And of course, that part would be, the education part would go on throughout the entire process. The education part would be, what's your new trash day if it changes? What's your recycling service day and what items are accepted? And other services changes such as anything outside of the container would not be picked up, you need to call the office to have arrangements made for that to be picked up. What many people are interested in, the capital expenditures, what we anticipate, the purchase of the three additional sidearm trucks would be approximately $825,000. The refuse containers, based on previous purchase price, around $450,000, which is a total of 1,275,000 upfront. Then we have to look at the annual expenses, where they would increase or decrease. Currently, on education, we would like, we would have to spend money to flyers and things like that to educate the public on their recycling day and trash day. Some type of expense for advocacy in which the, the program that the city manager had mentioned previously. The fuel expense, we anticipate would go up because basically what you're doing is covering the city twice, once for the trash and once for the recycling. Although all, all residents may not participate, you, you're still going to cover the city The fleet maintenance, the automated or the sidearm vehicles, based on the history of the ones that we have now, the maintenance will go up, and you're looking at an additional $70,000 per year for vehicle maintenance. However, on the personal services, we anticipate that the services being provided could be done with fewer people if we have the right equipment. This would be done through attrition, and that's based on approximately 50% participants. Hopefully, you know, I would like to think that we can get everyone in the city to, to participate in recycling and that, that personal service line may, may or may not change, it just depends. If you'll see the total there, it's an annual increase of approximately $89,000, but I would have to get the, the financial experts in John Perkins and his staff, that does not include annual depreciation expense. If you remember, our solid waste division is ran as an enterprise fund and they do play, pay or have depreciation expense. We anticipate, or I anticipate, that would be an additional $200,000 a year based on the new equipment and the, the rollouts. I know I went through that kind of fast, but that's just an idea of what we think it would take for the curbside recycling program. Any questions or anything stand out that...
Chris, I got one. The price of trucks is 825,000. Is that trading in those rear packers?
Right.
Is that the net difference? Any idea?
No, that's essentially what we have to do, Commissioner, is we have to buy a new truck, and then we liquidate the other truck, and then we take the proceeds from that and bring it back into the solid waste fund for future capital expenses, but we typically liquidate those through GAB deals.
So, so we get a trade-in, correct?
Right, that's not a net, that's a, just a cost that they're taking into account, selling the equipment.
I think the City of Paducah is advantaged here in looking at this and that you have a very successful program in place of curbside collection of garbage, so to speak, that is well-received and well-regarded by the public. You also have a utility that is, excuse me, utility enterprise that is financially strong, so that, that gives a, a much better platform to consider doing this than what might otherwise be the case. So there's a lot of information that was brought before you tonight. There are, there is communication going on with, with a multitude of stakeholders here, and again, the process of preparing the proposal for facilities is, is well underway. It's altogether unlikely that we would be able to have the future facilities to the degree that they're different than what they are now or under different management in place at the end of the current contract, so in all likelihood, we're looking at some kind of a extension for at least a short period of time there, but we are trying to be very forward-looking here. In order to add this service, appreciate the opportunity, and I know these gentlemen do, to try to bring forward to you a program that is structured around a multitude of things, not the least of which is efficiency. You heard several times that this is intended to bring in this additional program within the existing fee. Again, that's a goal. Cannot swear tonight that that would be altogether possible, but we think that it's within range and that, again, being allowed to maximize the efficiency in part through additional investment, we think that it's, it's within sight anyway, and I think that's a, a strong value that needs to be part of this, is that we, we do it as efficiently as we can. So I know there are a lot of questions, and as you have the opportunity to digest this over the coming weeks, there'll be a lot more, so I'd anticipate, Mayor Kayla, we'd come back and workshop format a few weeks down the road and pick up the discussion and, and see what, what's on your mind, and we will be a little further along in, in some other things and, and probably be able to fill in a few more blanks. In the meantime, any feedback that you want to provide individually, we'd be very happy to have that as well. Thank you very much, Chris. Nice, good presentation. Rick?
Thank you. Thank you, Rick and Chris, both for your hard work. As I said, it probably leave a lot more questions than answers tonight, a lot to think about. But it has been a goal of ours for many years to get to curbside recycling, so. Any Commissioner comments? Oh, City Manager's report, sorry.
I just have a request for executive session for economic development, please.
Okay. Commissioner's comments tonight? It is the last meeting of the year, of course, you know, before Christmas. We're not having one next year, next week?
We'd like to stay on schedule.
I don't think we're having one next week, correct?
We don't have an agenda prepared, no.
Nothing on the agenda.
Nothing on the agenda.
Is the last meeting.
Oh, yes. You two got a red.
Yeah, a green.
Do we have any public comments? Okay, come on up, sir.
Well, I came down here so many times at Paducah Power, I decided I wasn't going to come down here anymore. But then, I happened to find this article in Kentucky City Magazine, a publication of Kentucky League of Cities, I guess y'all get that?
Mm-hmm, we do.
Yeah. Well, I guess, it wasn't the status of that hotel y'all supposed to be building.
Oh, well, we're not building it.
Well, the city's helping build. Is it...
It's coming along.
It's coming along. Well, I just wanted to, have you seen this article?
Mm-hmm.
About how they have doing up in Owensboro and they managed to get the Omicon Convention?
Mm-hmm.
And I'm just pointing out that I don't think that Hotel and Convention Center is going to be as big a deal as you think it is because Owensboro Convention Center is so big and they're going to have 488 rooms within two miles of downtown, and we're only going to have 121. And I'm just saying, I hope it does, but in the Paducah Convention Center's heyday, when you had the 400 and some odd room exactly then there, you didn't have any competition in Owensboro or Hopkinsville. And now it's really going to be a struggle because the Owensboro Convention Center, by the time this new hotel goes online, is going to have such a big lead, they're going to be going after every convention y'all be going after with a lot more hotel rooms to service it. So I just thought I'd bring that down here.
Gee, thanks. That's a great way to end the meeting.
It's a free enterprise system. It's all about competition. It'll make us all better.
Yeah, that's true.
Free enterprise, I mean.
But I mean, I'm pointing out that both, both of the hotels in Owensboro were built with private financing, the city didn't have to help them build either.
Are you sure about that?
It's right here in the article. I'll read this article, read y'all.
But they built the convention center. They raised, well, it doesn't matter. Yeah, they raised a lot of money to build their new convention center.
They raised their insurance tax to build that, the insurance premium tax to build the convention center.
Right, the city and the county both raised their insurance premium tax.
That's the only tax they raised.
They doubled it.
They doubled it.
Right.
Have you been there?
Several times, yes.
It's really nice.
Yeah, they, and also point out that the Hawkinsville Convention Center and the Owensville Convention Center have in-house kitchens, and everything here has to be catered out. Because I was up there for the one on the Judd concert, and they had 1,900 people there that they served dinner. So I'm just saying, they're really going to have to get on the ball if they're going to market this convention center when that hotel gets built.
I'm sure they will.
Yeah.
They're not going to do that kind of investment and not be on the ball.
Uh-huh, okay, thank you.
So I appreciate you coming. Merry Christmas.
Do you want to see this article?
We've seen it. We've seen it there.
Okay, thank you.
We do have an executive session tonight, and we will not be coming back to make any decisions, so before, before we go to our executive session, yes?
Who's reading the executive session?
I have. Carol?
I'm going to the board, go into closed session for discussion of matters pertaining to the following topics. A specific proposal by a business entity where public discussion of the subject matter would jeopardize the location, retention, expansion or upgrading of a business entity as permitted by KRS 61.8101G.
Second. City Clerk, please.
Mr. Gault.
Aye.
Mr. Rose.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Kayla.
Aye. So we just want to wish everyone a merry Christmas. And, and a very, very happy Christmas. Thank you.
All right, now can we take it off?